All right. Good afternoon. Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Wednesday, October 16, 2024. It's 2:03 PM. Time entered, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Carrie Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus, all present. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Rob Campbell, Rob Gelder, Josh Cummings, Summer Miller, Budget. So we have two and a half hours slated. Public virtual attendance available on the Thursday County YouTube channel. First up is Budget Containment.
Thank you so much, Chair. Commissioners, so we're going to bring the PowerPoint presentation up. Today, we're going to start a conversation about really what will become the building of the 2627 budget. This is a conversation of topics and options for us and the budget team to go back and do research, then come back with ideas and some firm proposals that take a look at how do we adjust the shortfall that's been identified. Next slide we saw this morning, I'm going to next slide, please. This is a slide from this morning's presentation. Thanks so much. That's so cute that you got to figure through it or something. Next slide is what you saw this morning. It shows in 2026 and 27 that we're below the needed cash reserves to actually pay our bills. Now, that's just discussed at length, but it really sets the stage for what we look, are going to be looking to in order to do the research to come back to the board in several weeks with ideas about how to fix that and bring the cash reserves up above the needed point. Now, let's talk a little bit about the cash reserves and what is needed. So in looking at the numbers, I think it's about, what was it, 14 or 12?
12 million is the minimum cash to pay the bills every month.
12 million is what we need in the account. 25 million is the ideal. But what we're going to be looking to get some direction from all of you on is your comfort level on what you want those numbers to look like in the out years in 26 and 27. Basically, based on how much containment we do will affect how much fund balance we have in the out years. 25 is probably way too aggressive. 12 million is way too bare bones. And so, you know, a realistic number would look like anywhere in the high teens to 20 million and build that over a period of time, over the next few, well, over the next budget cycle, and then even into future budget cycles. I think the perspective that I'll bring to the table is the fact that we don't have large cash reserves and other funds to mitigate major disasters or impacts to the budget just makes me nervous riding so close to the $12 million line because then it would just take one circumstance in the county for then us to say we don't have cash on hand and our really only option would be to borrow money, which is never a good option for operational costs. So that leads us to next slide, which is just, again, considerations on impacts to the budget. The first item is not as pressing anymore. It's been discussed several times here with Commissioners. City of Olympia Minimum Wage Increase. When it first came up, it was, the thought was that that was going to be implemented pretty quickly, and I don't believe that it's on a track to be implemented that fast. But it's something that our team is monitoring, and they've done some initial costing on that, and the costing varies based on whether or not we're going to adjust for the impaction of raising certain positions up and then other positions are impacted and where that goes. It's an exercise that the team did high level, and more time can be spent on it, but we were conserving our resources to finish the budget process rather than dive really deep into that. The next consideration which we're making progress on is the maintenance of effort. At our last meeting, the Board gave direction to set it at 2023 funding level, and we're going to be meeting in the next couple of weeks. Schedules are pretty impacted right now, so we're going to meet as soon as time is available with our budget team, Sheriff's Team, and the Auditors Team, discuss how we're going to account for those dollars on the back end, and then come back to the Board for a final conversation and recommendation on what that will look like. The next item is collective bargaining agreements, mediation, arbitration, and budget impacts. We currently have certain numbers programmed into our budget for consideration, but those numbers may, well, most likely will turn out to not be what is actualized in current collective bargaining conversations. And I know that the Board has had detailed conversations about that. But that, the current budget, when we look at the forecast includes, I think we programmed a 3%.
Placeholder.
Placeholder, and so anything above that will just only deepen the out-year cuts, I mean, out-year deficit necessitating other budget mitigations approaches. And then the last bullet is the public defense, new caseload standards. I don't believe the public defender had anything programmed into the 25 budget, and so as we look and work with Patrick and his team on what those numbers are, that also will have an impact to the overall budget because those numbers aren't programmed in at this point.
But neither for sure is the cost associated with that. I mean, they don't know for sure what that's going to be, and they don't know about the implementation, do they, for sure?
Yeah, that's still being discussed and being worked through. I believe we had the privilege of hosting that conversation here in this room. So I think there's dialogue that's still taking place, but just wanted you to be aware that there's no placeholder in the numbers that you're seeing, and so when we look at the out-year deficit, it doesn't include anything that if that is implemented, we'll have to come back and take a look at that. Any questions?
Just a comment on the earlier slide, when you talk about the, you know, I don't disagree about the cash flow line and all that, but when you were talking about an emergency, we do have, we'd have built a $4 million rainy day fund, which isn't adequate, but I have to point it out because when I joined the Board, we didn't have even that, so.
Making progress.
It's at least something that would help us in a kind of an emergency.
Yeah. It will be well said. So if we go to revenue options to consider, I believe, and Robin can speak to this more than I can, but I believe this was shared earlier in the year.
In February, it's my understanding that Nicole had shared with you a large detailed list of some of the revenue opportunities that the state still has, or rather, that the county still has available under state laws. So this is a kind of compressed list of something that you've already seen it, and I could just walk very quickly through what some of these opportunities might be. First is the lid lift in the general fund. The total allowable amount that can be deposited into the general fund is a levy, the property tax levy, by the way. The maximum is $1.80 in running the new levy numbers. Our current levy rate is 82 cents per thousand, and that gives you capacity of 98 cents roughly. We would dial those numbers in a little tighter once the final levy is approved, but you're currently at an 82% rate anticipating a levy of $50.5 million in the general fund, and 10%, or rather, 10 cents per thousand on a levy lift would generate roughly $6.4 million a year.
Can you repeat that, how much?
Roughly $6.4 million at 10 cents per thousand in the current valuation. And of course, that would change in future years as we adjust, but your initial revenue could be that much if you went with 10 cents. You've got capacity of 98 cents, so there's quite a bit of capacity. And of course, this would go into the general fund and could be used for any purpose, any legitimate general fund purpose. Second item on the list is the Veterans Assistance Fund Levy. As you know, this levy is a reduction to the general fund, so it is on this list. The Board could choose to increase it. We are currently at the minimum, and if you're interested in talking about that, it can only be used for veterans, but we would bring you more information at a future date.
Don't we have quite a balance in that fund right now?
It, I have not looked at it recently. I would have to look at how much is there. We had a substantial balance in that fund.
Without having a plan, why would?
I would not recommend this personally, but I'm going through your options.
This is a shake in the tree kind of list. We're not saying this is in order of priority. We're just kind of going over it to then.
Just what's available.
And then have discussion.
On that first item, is it a 60-40 vote or 50-50 vote?
For a lid lift, a simple lid lift is a simple majority vote. Then we have the county road levy. Again, this would be a levy lid lift. The maximum levy for the road fund is $2.25 per thousand. The latest calculation of the levy, and again, it does need to be updated, but the current calculation is at 74 cents. That gives you capacity of $1.31 in the road fund, and if you were to raise it by 10 cents, it would generate approximately $3 million. That is only levied on the unincorporated area of the county and would have to be used only for road purposes.
And when you say only for road purposes, so you'd have to keep it separate, you couldn't do a shift?
Well, you could do a shift. Let's talk about the road levy shift. It's next on the list. You could shift your road levy capacity today, and as you know, we're currently already shifting $4.7 million at detriment to the road fund.
If I could just pause right there, you know, I think that based on what we talked about this morning, we really need to sit and have some time to sit with Public Works, Jennifer and the team to figure out what are we deferring? And when it comes to infrastructure and roads, when you defer things, it only gets more expensive to maintain in the long run. So not, not saying that in objection to the Commission's ability to make these changes, just want to do our due diligence to make sure we understand as we make one decision what the impacts could be. And I think there's an opportunity for us to do some detailed analysis of that, to come back and have a separate discussion with the Board on that. I'm sorry, Rob.
Nope, nope. That's all good, good reminders. And also applies to the next item on the list, the diversion of road tax, which, as the Board may recall, is restricted to traffic enforcement by Sheriff Road deputies. Currently, you are diverting $1.5 million. To date, the Sheriff's Office has reported over $2 million in eligible costs, so that could go up, but whether or not it should is another conversation.
And that comes out of the road fund?
It would come out of the road fund to the general fund to be used solely for the sheriff.
Is that a diversion? Is that like capped in place by that maintenance of effort, or is that?
No.
Did you reduce that diversion ever?
You certainly could reduce the diversion. You're not locked into diverting money. You are locked in under non-splanting at a contribution from the general fund, wherever that general fund revenue may be generated.
But this is not out of the general fund?
This, this is money that is diverted from the road fund to the general fund to help pay the costs of the Sheriff's Office, but you don't have to do this. Many counties don't.
But if you turned off the faucet from the road fund, you couldn't reduce it in the general fund because that's capped in the MOE. So there's no change?
You're obligated.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't affect the non-splanting. So we could get deeper into, this is just a quick overview, but we could get deeper into that at another time.
I just want to make sure I'm tracking your question, though. Could you just restate?
There's money coming from the road fund.
Right.
Going into the general fund that pays for the Sheriff's Road Deputies doing road stuff. If you were to reduce that amount coming out of here, that wouldn't, you would still have to keep the amount that the general fund is putting in to that.
I think that that is absolutely accurate.
So to that point, we all agree that 2023 was the number that you're going to, we set as the maintenance of effort. County's contributing above that two years later. So if we do reduce, we have to just watch where those water levels are at to make sure that we're not going below.
Yeah.
Thanks for receiving the questions, help me understand it.
Okay. The next item on the list is Conservation Futures Levy. This, too, would be a lid lift. The funding would go to the Conservation Futures Fund. The maximum levy for that fund is 6.25 cents per thousand, so that's .0625 per thousand. The current levy is at .026 cents per thousand, which leaves you capacity of about three, three and a half cents roughly. Per thousand, the levy is currently collecting approximately $1.6 million a year, and if you're interested in more information on that, we could bring it to you. That would not have any benefit to the general fund. And then the last item on this list is Emergency Medical Services, or EMF, EMS, also known as 911. This has a 50 cent maximum property tax levy. You are currently well under that. You could do a lid lift, but you need to recall that you are in the middle of a multi-year lid lift for this fund, for Medic One, and it would be three more years, so I would advise that you not, it would get quite complicated to attempt to change that. And again, no benefit to the general fund.
So again, Rob?
2027 would be the year that, before the voters again.
So we have to keep that in mind as we're thinking about a courthouse as well.
Yeah, because you don't want to have too many competing interests and fatigue with voters. There's some things to balance.
So those are all the opportunities for property taxes currently available to the Board. In retail sales and use taxes, you'll see each of these items has an asterisk. That is because they are things that we currently do not do. The Board could choose to impose a cultural access program, a sales tax of 1/10th of 1%. It would be limited in its use to advance and preserve the arts and sciences, and it would have to go to nonprofit cultural organizations, so no real benefit to the general fund there. The next four items are Transportation Benefit District, the first two license fees, and the second two, sales taxes. You're very familiar with those, yes, sir.
So that cap sales tax, that has to go to outside sources? That couldn't be used to fund cultural access programs, arts and sciences that the county does or would want to do?
So we would need to bring you a whole lot more information. We would need to do the, the research on that to say specifically how it can be used, but at a very high level, what the, the county revenue guide that is produced by MRSC states is that it must go to nonprofit cultural organizations. So we'd have to look deeper into that.
Just maybe the Fair Board could fall in, but we'd have to do more research.
Olympia passed this task.
Yes, they have.
It's like their armory and their programming that they're building into that. It's going to a lot of external, they have ARP grants and things.
Yeah, it's important to know if the county establishes a cap, then no city in the county needs it. So you would inherently force Olympia to dissolve.
Even if they've already established it?
We could speak to that necessarily in a deeper.
We could do the research and bring it back.
I do know it's, I know that's right as to like jurisdictions, like we would, Tom Water couldn't do it if we didn't, but I don't know that. I think Olympia is okay because they already did it.
With the housing tax, it was, if they established one first, then they, yeah, okay.
So there are complexities on jurisdictions and timing, but we need to bring you the details on that.
Thank you.
All right. So as I was saying, the next four items are specifically related to the Transportation Benefit District. You've heard a lot about those from Public Works, so I'm not going to go into any depth on these, but just to note that those are available to you, again, specifically for transportation purposes.
Are there any questions about those items?
We talked about it, like, I mean, it sounded like there was some interest in having further discussion.
No, we made a direction, and we told them to bring it back so we could, they were going to review with legal because we had talked about putting it on the April special election calendar, and so we were going to.
I was not, I was interested in the council manic, like a mix between sales tax and.
Because we said we would do an advisory vote is basically what that discussion was. It's like we would do an advisory vote to see what, and everyone was present at that meeting.
I don't remember that.
So what was decided is like, yeah, we would do a councilmatic vote, but we would, just based on the discussion, it was like, we're going to do an advisory vote first to see like their preference between, I think it was either like license tabs or our sales tax. So I'm not sure. So staff said, okay, we'll draft a proposal, and they're going to bring it back. And so just based on that, that's why we canceled the rest of the TBD meetings for the rest of the year.
Yeah, Commissioner Mahia is on the right track. I'm a little fuzzy, so let us work with Josh and Jennifer to encapsulate that, and we'll make that part of our update because that was action that was taken.
Because there was a council manic option, but I know I was the one that said I wouldn't support it unless we had an advisory vote and knew the public was behind it. We don't have to do that, but that was kind of like condition I set, so then people, I think Gary agreed with that approach, so we agreed to go ahead and tee up a possible advisory vote for consideration. So that's where I think it was left.
Ask clarification, were you talking about the conservation areas REITs?
No.
TBD.
Okay.
The sales tax or the car tab?
I thought you had shifted down. No, no, not yet. We're on those four there still. So Josh will work with Jen, getting some perspective on that and then update on where we're at, so that can factor into where we're at on some of these funding sources.
It could help if Summer were involved in this.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Josh, loop Summer in, please, and Robin.
Okay.
You're not gone yet, Rob.
I'm closer every day. The next item on this list is Conservation REIT. This would have to go out for voter approval, but the Board could impose a 1% REIT, which is an excise tax, on the sale of real estate. And if you think about with our current REIT, that is a quarter that we're currently collecting about three and a half million a year, this could be a substantial amount of money. It doesn't have to be 1%, it's up to 1%. This could be used for the acquisition and maintenance of conservation areas, including parks.
Maintenance being a big word.
Yes, it would pay for maintenance of parks, which is one of the areas that you're lacking in, and that would provide some relief to the general fund, but it would not be a revenue into the general fund.
Pause to see if there's any comments?
We talked about, when we were talking about the axoning issue and the need to compensate farmers if they were, or to enhance our transfer development right program, we talked about that as a source for that, parks, and also like if costs rose to acquire HCP lands so that we wouldn't have to raise fees within our CPAD, you know, to kind of cover inflationary, unexpected inflationary costs to cover HCP mitigation land.
It could be used.
Were three possible? A fourth could be, you know, if we ever ended up with any forests, I'm just saying, in our, you know.
Forest management.
Yeah, forest management means.
What is it, what's it called, a forestry?
Only if I could add, the one that would probably require a little bit more research is the use of conservation area and how restrictive it is because active recreation in a park may not be the same thing as conservation, depending on how it's written.
It's written pretty broadly in the revenue guide, but I would agree that we'd want to look at it carefully before you move forward.
Because on conservation futures, which I would imagine is the same definition, I mean, we've acquired parks, right? That was, that are pretty active recreation.
We have.
I mean.
Yes, we have acquired parks, and the current Conservation Futures property tax levy allows for up to 25% to be used for maintenance of the lands purchased with conservation futures. So that entire 25% goes to Public Works to be used for the maintenance of the parks that were partly purchased with those funds. That's how we use part of that money today.
Yeah, and I think to Robin, Robin's point, we'd want to do a lot of research on all of these.
Yes.
Our goal today is to give you high-level overview of the menu and then for you to provide some perspective on what you'd like us to research and then come back to that. Come back to you. Robin, you want to?
Thank you. I'm going to mention an item that is not on the list, and I apologize that it's not on printed version. We'll get you an updated one, but it is directly related to parks. But it is directly related to parks and that is a metropolitan park district. Or there's also a parks and recreations district that the county can form either one of those. The metropolitan parks district, even though it's metropolitan, that includes counties. It is a property tax levy of up to 75 cents per thousand and would be used specifically to purchase and maintain parks. The other option available is the parks and recreations district. It is a 60 cent per thousand property tax levy. It's limited to a six-year levy. You'd have to go to the voter every six years. Both of these are require voter approval. But again, specifically for parks.
Is one perpetual and one six years?
The metropolitan parks district, I didn't see a time limit on that one. But the parks and recreation district has a six-year limit, so you'd have to go to the voters every six years. Believe that's what King County does.
Does any jurisdiction currently have? Just Olympia?
Metro.
Olympia and Tom Water both have.
T field.
So Olympia and Tom Water?
How much would that generate?
How much would it generate? I have not done the research to see how much.
Depends on how much you ask for.
Yeah, it it completely would. And considering it would be in the unincorporated area only, it would not be in incorporated areas. That would, it would probably be in the $3 million range, but we'd have to check.
Class that out for you in detail.
Every 10 cents.
Yeah, what's that?
Three million for every 10 cents.
Yeah, I could see that being interesting, like discussion over the next couple of years.
It's something worth exploring. I mean, there are three options on how you could fund parks. Conservation REIT, the Metropolitan Park District, or a Park and Recreation District. So that's, those are available for your discussion. Back to the list, starting under other excise taxes. These are all very minor amounts, but they are available to you. The admissions tax. That is a 5% tax on the price of a ticket. So it's the cost of admissions. It would only be in the unincorporated area. So we were hard pressed to think of an example other than maybe the fair where there's events that sell a ticket that you could put this tax on. So, oh, there you go. That that could qualify. So it would just, it would go to the general fund, but it really wouldn't generate very much money. There is a commercial parking tax that has no percentage limitation. So you could tax parking as much as you please, but I can't think of any parking areas in the unincorporated county where there's charges. So again, not a big revenue source and it would have to go to transportation. There is a local option gas tax.
Commissioner Edwards speaking in favor of this one earlier.
You think you did, huh?
The local option gas tax is 10% on the state gas tax. That requires voter approval. It would have to be used for transportation. And I would just mention that no county in the state has been successful at getting that passed. If any have even tried. And then last item on this list, we collect a gambling tax on punchboards and pull tabs. The maximum is a 10% net receipt. It would go to the general fund. We're currently collecting, what did I tell you, around 100,000 a year? And I'm not sure what the percentage is set at, so we could raise that and collect a little bit of money.
I think that has to go towards the enforcement effort, doesn't it?
It has to go to public safety. It must be used for public safety, not general purposes. So there's that. And then also now on this list, there are a variety of other fees that the board could look at. In the auditor's office, coroner collects fees, the courts, the sheriff, the treasurer. We could certainly work with those officials and see if there are any opportunities there to raise fees. But those are pretty much the opportunities that are still available to the board.
Doesn't Jazzcom collect fees too for the county or the auditor does?
You just raised those.
So that's an overview of revenue options. Appreciate Robyn giving high level. If there is a desire for us to dig deep on any of these and we do research, happy to do that. Just want to pause to see if there's any board questions or discussion.
So the assessor brought up the levy conversation during his presentation. So I guess just like wanting to have a conversation with the board about it, right? Because I.
Was the assessor going to go out and campaign for that? Is that what he said? Oh, I guess I misread that.
You know, I'm sure he would. I don't, I don't want to speak for him on that. But I just, I don't know, I just wanted us to kind of talk about these revenue options and I. But I also like, right, if we're gonna be doing the TBD advisory vote, right? And I just don't want things to, again, don't want to create voter fatigue and us asking for different items and so.
I'm not sold on the TBD advisory vote. I'd like to talk about that more. I.
We can talk about it at our next TBD meeting.
Versus just not doing it or doing it councilmanically?
Councilmanically. Because I think voter fatigue is a real thing. I mean, you can do a modest TBD proposal.
I know, I think the councilmatic for, it was, if it's councilmatic, sales tax, it's 1%. If it's license fee, it's up to $50.
I can do both. That was what I asked and I thought the answer was yes.
I'd have to check that.
That's part of the research that we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can bring it back. I think it was on the presentation. I just don't recall and I don't want to give you misinformation. So we'll circle back with Jennifer and answer these questions.
I don't know. I mean, the. I, my philosophy is that you can always ask voters, right? I mean, it's not good to be unsuccessful. I know that. But there's always. I guess the conversation before we had the updated budget, you know, scenario is different to me than it is now. I mean, we didn't have a $12 million gap and we needed to, you know, shore up the road fund. Okay, you know, or, you know, like, if I'm going to ask voters to do that and expect and to put effort into success, like, I want it to really fix a problem. Like, it's, to me, it's a big deal to ask, I mean, in a sense. And and it's a big deal to get something over the finish line. And it needs to be like, you know, it's a few hundred thousand dollars or whatever. I mean, I'm even going to ask for that because that's just a drop in the bucket of what this county really needs to cure its structural deficit. So, you know, I'm frankly more interested in a levy lift or something that can actually be weighty. We go to the public, you know, they approve it if they have the trust in what we're doing. But if it's successful, it actually gets us somewhere toward our, all the different needs that are pent up. I mean, to do these littler things, conservation REIT, I think, goes to some really important areas. So like, I still have interest in that, but I guess I'm, what I'm talking through is just kind of like my, my enthusiasm for the TBD. I mean, TBD wasn't even, the things that we could do, they weren't even going to solve the road problem. I mean, it was kind of small potatoes even for the road issue. And we, and and to impose another, we did a councilmatic tax for the home fund, which was a big deal. I didn't take that lightly. To me, what I thought was a crisis issue in the community. To do one for TBD, you know, I don't know how that's going to, I don't know what the public appetite is for that. And yeah, we can do it, but it's not going to solve our problem. And it could hurt us from having to make a bigger ask to actually solve a problem. So I'm, I'm gun shy about that.
I, I, well, I will always advocate for our transportation, our roads, because the impact is there, especially when we're shifting four million, but it's about to be six again. I mean, that's, that's a detriment to our whole transportation system. And Public Works is already doing. They've been like impacted because of inflation and, you know, they still have to. The longer we wait, right, and I serve on the county road administration board, so I'm a little bit biased in knowing that. We are shifting the most in the state out of all the counties, like, it's, it's, it's a hard pill to swallow. And I, I want to be able to support our, our county roads as much as possible. So that's kind of why I was, you know, really advocating for TBD. Now, if we go for a levy lift and the promises that we're going to stop shifting six million or four million dollars from, you know, to the general fund, then I'm all on board for that because then we would be making, doing two solutions. One thing I I will add in this is that I know that we're not the only jurisdiction who's considering this. I know the city of Olympia was talking about possibly going out to the voters to do theirs. And there's other jurisdictions are talking. And so I believe that there needs to be, if the board is willing to chew on this or wanting to go forward with this or have more conversation on this. I would ask for us to have a little bit of coordination with the rest of the jurisdictions. If they're going to go forward and ask their voters, because at least then we can all go out and tell the same, the same story. So.
My thought about like the little things is like, we're in a, we're in a crisis, right? So take action on the things that you can guarantee and then you can make happen without external forces. But, you know, be mindful about what you're doing. So like, take action on the things you can take action on, like the TBD or the punchboards. And maybe it's not substantive, but do that. And then like, before you ask for more money, you have to have this conversation. Like, how do you, how do you contain the budget and, you know, kind of get your house in order better? And then you can have.
And then what are the practical impacts of that?
Yeah, yeah.
That you can say to the voters.
Yeah, like, like, yeah, talk budget containment. Take action on what you can take action on and then reevaluate. And then begin a discussion about a voter-approved initiative that would be substantial. But we've already done the work prior to kind of rein things in. Like, that's my thought on like a sequence or strategy.
Go ahead, Chair.
I guess I'm going to sound like a broken record, you know, you've heard me say, trust me. We have to develop trust and there is an old joke about trust. It's, you know, trust me, I'm here from the government. I'm here to help. And we all know what the public thinks of that, so I wouldn't do it if we weren't ready to do it. And if we had not developed that trust and developed a plan that the public agrees with. And I'll use the recent tax for the law enforcement as an example. So I'm a long ways from being ready to ask, to tell the public that they can trust me.
Should we go to the next piece? Absolutely. Yeah, the next slide. Budget containment options. It's definitely by no means comprehensive. This is just a high-level overview that kind of the signal to the board. These and other ideas would like to start researching to determine how they are going to impact the 26, 27 budget. And come back to the board with some recommendations and thoughts to have those discussions. We can go over them fairly quickly.
Oh, you're not going to go over each one of those?
Oh, yeah, we will. There's not many more slides to this presentation, so people go over these. So no new general fund positions until budget stabilization. That's, when the team told me the average cost of compensation for positions is about 100K annually. And you start looking at, based on the forecast that we have, it's about a $10 million ongoing issue. Give you a bit of an idea of how many positions, if that's the only place we're going to go. So adding general fund positions is going to be problematic because all it's going to do is increase that deficit.
You want to stop here?
Are we going to talk about that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
What do we do about the law enforcement tax? We made a commitment. Are we already going to break our commitment? We're going to look kind of like we did with the Indian reservations 100 years ago or something.
I wouldn't be a general fund position.
Yeah, those aren't general funds. Those are public safety sales taxes. Yeah.
They're already approved by the board.
And then we get to the point where we've co-mingled or we're talking about co-mingling that money.
That's what the accounting discussion is.
Yeah, we'll have the accounting discussion with our teams offline. But we're not, we're not discussing co-mingling the funding. We're discussing how do we account for it on the backend to make sure that it's the most appropriate way to pass any potential audit perspectives, et cetera. We're talking about general fund departments that, as I understand, every department is going to want to increase their operations. It happens every year. It happens in the amendment, after the midterm budget. And to have to wade through those requests when we don't have the funds for it is a bit of a challenge.
So, but maybe connected to Commissioner Edwards' question is what I heard Brandon, so if, if we did that, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump into eliminate vacant. If you eliminated vacant positions and it so happened, and that was done evenly across the board to every department and office. And let's just say theoretically, I don't know the situation, but let's say the sheriff office had a higher proportion of vacancies. That's not a violation of the public safety sales tax because it's a budget cut that's applied evenly. Essentially a policy that's, that's what I heard Brandon say. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Oh, you're, you're talking about if we have to, from the maintenance of effort, if we have to reduce operations because we have economic issues that we're addressing.
Yes.
As long as there's a fair allocation across the board. But on bullet point number two, we're not recommending that we just do a blind, just eliminate all positions. And we're not asking for that approval today. What we're saying is we would go back, research it and then operationalize those, those conversations. So then come back to the board and say, this is the savings we think we can get based on what this looks like. There are some places, though, Chair, that some departments are keeping vacancies for long periods of time. And so position control would be a good thing for us to look at anyways.
Do we have to limit it to general fund positions?
We could do it across the board.
Well, I'm just saying, somebody counted 53. It wasn't me, but.
Oh, sure.
Somebody got to that number and I don't know how many of those were sheriff department positions that made up the 53. And if it, I'm, I'm just saying conceptually, if that was a greater, like when Brandon, let me phrase my question the opposite way. If, when Brandon said, if you're responding, you know, equally, does that mean the policy equally or the effect? Like, the policy could be, any, general fund positions are going to be eliminated if they're vacant. That's a fair policy. We're not, we don't even know, you know? But then the effect might be, oh, it's, oh, they're 90% sheriff positions. Well, the effect would look unfair, right? Because they're getting hit disproportionately by the even-handed policy. So. Okay, well, I'm just saying.
Part of the reason that you set a non-supplanting is a dollar amount, not a number of position or a program or a, it's, you wouldn't be able to go below a certain dollar amount.
And to your question, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. You're just talking theoretically.
Yeah, theoretically.
Yeah, what we wanted to do is, and I appreciate you responding to the sub-points on, on second bullet point. We just wanted to give an idea of, of total context. That in no way has been refined or worked out to the departments and the operational impacts. I believe the spirit of a brand. I believe the spirit of what Brandon was saying is that if the board is, is adjusting its budget, let's say for round numbers, we have ten million dollars that they're adjusting. And we distribute out cuts to departments. And those distributions are based on operational impacts. And if the rational and fair distribution of those cuts, that's where you are allowed to have flexibility on this supplanting language. Uh, and I just wanna be clear, because I know probably there's a lot of departments watching. We're not at this point making decisions or even making recommendations about cuts or going after the sheriff's budget. We're just answering the philosophical conversation about, yeah, we can get there because supplanting never ties your hands. And if the economy goes downward like we're experiencing right now, that you're locked in at the detriment of other operations.
Yeah, and I'm just, I was just digging a little deeper into Brandon's really general comment that, you know, as long as it's even or whatever, what does even mean? Even in effect or even in, in concept?
Yeah, I think-
Because it could be even in concept, but disproportionate in effect.
Yeah, I think that if it, the, the extreme example is, you know, it's six million, let's just say six million dollars for public safety sales tax. If the board were to say, we're cutting the sheriff's budget, six million dollars of general fund, and we didn't cut anywhere else, that's the extreme of what you don't wanna do.
Sure.
If we're looking at general fund cuts and everyone's taking a share of those cuts, um, we would absolutely want to make sure that there's rationale behind those. So that if someone were to come forward and challenge them, that we could explain budgetarily why we did what we did.
I, I would also add that we'd wanna opportunity to look a little deeper into that because that was the first time I had heard that comment. So, you know, for you wanna know more about it, so do we. Yeah. We, we don't have the answers to the question you've been asking all the time.
All the team did is just put from a standpoint of what's the impact of something like that. But those numbers are very high level and are, I just wanna state, without any conversation with our elected appointed departments about impacts to operation and service, that's not what we're having today, we're just saying, this is some things that we can start working on to come back to the board to have deeper conversations about. Hope that helps.
So my question about general fund positions, what, what's the?
Yeah, we can have position control, which would be controlling when positions are vacant. So rather than them just being vacant for long periods of time, we have some timeframes around them. We can do that across all funds and all departments.
Is that, what's the rationale behind doing that or not doing that?
Well, the rationale behind doing that would be, you know, there, there, there's positions that stay vacant because it's hard to recruit and we would wanna work closely and set some parameters around that. But if departments are keeping positions vacant year after year, or budget cycle after budget cycle, it comes a point where you say, why do you need those positions? Again, we wouldn't do it in a vacuum, we're not making the decision here. All we're saying is that, that we could develop recommendations for the board to consider a policy that then creates opportunities for the budget team to work with departments to say, this position's been vacant for six months. Oh, yeah, we're, we're working with HR, we haven't been able to fill it. Or, well, we haven't really recruited for it, we're not sure what we're gonna do with it. And then that's the conversation that we look at, how do we control that? Because that's the number one driver for reversion back to the general fund, which creates this lopsided, oh, you budgeted this and, and you appropriated this, but then this much money came back that really isn't a budget problem. No, that's not how it works.
Yeah.
We're, the board's allowing the department to spend this money with the, um, understanding that they're gonna spend it. If they revert back because their targeting is off, that's a different conversation and a different scenario we have to work through.
Okay, or they're using the salary savings for other things.
And then that's where-
Which is inappropriate either.
I would say that's not appropriate budgeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll just, for county manager and Commissioner Fornia and Commissioner Klaus to benefit. I mean, we, we went deep in, in previous exercises of trying to cut the budget. We went pretty deep into this concept of vacancies and different ways to skin the cat, so to speak. And it didn't yield, I mean, the net result of it, when you hear from everybody and why they're doing it, can, you know, it, it didn't yield anywhere near twelve million dollars of, or anywhere near six point three million dollars.
But it did yield a lot of aggravation.
Yeah, it did yield a lot of that. Very effective.
I would say that, uh, any of these measures is gonna have a level of that.
Good point, though.
I think the, the reality is, when we don't have any money, continued requests coming in for general fund positions creates a situation where we're going through a lot of information, bringing requests forward. And there's a disconnect between where our situation is. I don't believe that what we're presenting to the board is a sky falling scenario. We would love to see revenues coming in higher. If they're projecting conservative in sales tax at two percent, I've said this before, and we're only realizing one point six, one point seven, that's not a disconnect, that's we're underperforming. We have to address and adjust, otherwise we're gonna find ourselves in a situation where we do not have cash on it. Next one is, uh, no budget amendments going into twenty, the twenty-five year. We would strongly recommend that, partly because you can see that we're barely making our pay, our, our cash on hand needs with what we've already approved. If the amendment comes around and there's a bunch more requests, that could be a, a major challenge. Research non-essential activities, that's kind of, I think, what Commissioner Edwards mentioned. That would be an exercise with departments. Research leave buyout fund and rate suspension, that's something that Commissioner McGee had mentioned about-
What do you mean rate suspension?
Oh, so right now there's a leave buyout fund that we, um, there's a, a rate that we pass on to departments to pay into that to cover the cost.
Yeah.
That fund hasn't been, uh, hit as much as we thought, partly because, um, employees, when they're leaving, they tend to be, oh, using their leave before they, before they actually end with the county, rather than leaving and then having a bunch of leave balances. So there's more, there's dollars in that fund for us to talk about. And one of the things we can do is slow down on what we're charging to, uh, fund that fund. Or have a two-year suspension where nobody pays and see how far the fund goes down and determine what we do in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine budget. Just like that, we're already there. Yes.
How do you evaluate non-essential activities? Because Commissioner Edwards' non-essential may be very different than Commissioner Klaus's non-essential. How do you?
Now, these are things that the counties isn't mandated to do. So it would be, it's not saying that it's not nice to do or not, it's not important to do. But we would come and say, here are areas where the county is, the counties are required to do a number of things. And then there's areas where the county isn't required to do things.
Uh, we did that exercise this last time too, and, uh, that one was very painful as well. As we asked departments, as they're considering, it was like, can you please bring, you know, like-
We're gonna all tell you that, that what they do is essential, but there's gotta be a way to objectively evaluate that without their input.
Statutory requirements. Yeah, statutory requirements, this is what, what the law requires you to perform.
So we did, we did a very, um, gonna say superficial look at it last year. But there are two studies, uh, that have been done in the last fifteen years um, that are more in-depth, uh, and objective looks at the RCWs about what we're required to do. And also, um-
Conducted the studies.
I beg your pardon?
Who conducted those studies?
Um, the first one was done by Sean Myers in the treasurer's office. And the second one, uh, we hired a, um, a temporary employee that came in and that was his sole job was to do that study.
And those are still relevant?
I have all of the documents from both of those. Um, so they need to be updated, someone would need to take the time, um, to do that level of research. You would wanna have discussions with the offices and departments. But the most recent study, I think it was like twenty fifteen, it, it said, here are the things that are required. Here are the things that are discretionary. And then it also had a component that of those things that we are required to do, what is the penalty if we don't do that?
I got Commissioner Edwards on the, on existing county manager.
I guess anytime you pick one area, i.e. the general fund for an example, there becomes a fairness issue, staff and animosity that's created. You know, you're telling one group, you can't, you can't, you can't. The other group just going along whistling like normal. So it's a big problem, just so you realize that.
I think you have to look at it from a super high level and set rules and boundaries and stick to them.
Well, but there's no reason to cut some, but the, some, one of the nurses in the health department that's going out visiting kids, because that's money coming in. So why would you wanna make cuts in those areas? That's all I'm saying. You just have to be careful about what you're doing and when you do it, because animosity can be created. It doesn't do morale any good. So, having been through all these things, that's all.
At the point I would offer along with, uh, you know, the statutory mandates is also having a layer of analysis related to the level of effort and level of service. So it's not just that it's mandated, but how quickly do you do it? How many transactions per FTE or, so you need to have that as well, uh, so that you can have a more round picture.
That's what I was thinking, because it's like, there's a lot of gray area, right? Like CPED, you know, when we cut the, you know, when Gary came in, we had like lesser hours. Well, that didn't work too good for the, you know, public and everything, but I mean, we were allowed to do it. We did it to meet budget problems. You talked about sheriffs not going out and doing certain kinds of calls and whatnot. I mean, so it's like, sure, we have a mandate to go do law enforcement, but there's discretion kind of within the activities based on level of service. I hadn't thought of it that way, but that's the most succinct way.
Even like the auditor's office, doing, uh-
Passport, sir.
The passport business, I mean, okay, so they have a position that becomes vacant because somebody leaves, what, are we gonna cut our own throat? Not have any revenue coming in by not filling that position? So there's always gonna be exceptions.
We're talking about the revenue question, but the other big one was the twenty-four, seven, you know? And then we were trying to do budget cuts and be fair and set rules, just like you said. Because I was a hundred percent where you were, what you said, you know? But then it was like, well, they're accepted because they're twenty-four, seven. The jail can't be cut, and the law enforcement can't be cut, and the emergency management can't be cut.
The coroner can't.
Yeah, and it's like, well, okay, now we've just lost half of our, of our departments that can be subject to this if that's what we're gonna say is an exemption.
Kinda leads to the last, the last item, uh, which is identify department targets and balance structural deficit. There's an aspect in this conversation that leaders have to leave their operations. And the reality is, is that we don't have enough money to continue the way we are today. So there has to be an adjustment. Our desire is to look at what, how do we adjust with the, the, the least amount of impact to operations? You know, what we don't have on here are words like layoff and furloughs. But those are things that would come under the last bullet point when we sit and talk about. If we give, if we break out what the need is on fixing the hole and we assign targets to that and work through that, that's where we'll come back to the board in the next several weeks to talk about how the impacts. And then it's up to-
You know, it's coming.
It's up to departments then to say, well, if I have to do this, this is gonna be the impact. And, and it is not a pleasant conversation, these are tough conversations to have. Robert?
I just wanna say how much I appreciate, um, Leonard's approach, uh, to this. Because many of us at this table have been through the, um, cut exercises, let's say, uh, in a very compressed timeline. And, uh, Leonard's approach to, let's get through this biennium, um, make the choice that you made this morning to get us through this biennium. And take, take the year, start now. Don't wait until next August or September to grapple with this for the twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium. But start now to think about how you're going to address it in the next two years. Gives you time to work through a lot of these things that you have not necessarily been afforded before, so. This is, this is time to work through.
The containment goals will help mitigate actual painful decisions later down the road?
You'll have the time to think through them.
Well, I'm hoping that it not only gives us the time, but it gives all of our leaders the time.
Exactly.
So that they don't feel, you know, like when it's-
Now you've got two weeks to figure this out.
They feel, and they're outs, they're outside the table, so to speak, then they feel really powerless. But this should empower each leader to know where we're going, what the kinds of things are that are gonna have to be done, and they can figure out the best way and make their case, and we can work it through over the year, however that looks. Every week, every two weeks, every month, every quarter, I don't know how we're gonna structure this, this exercise. But it's, I think it's gonna really help to have this need time.
And I would say that it's not just that revenue has to perform at, from one, from one point six percent to two percent, and then everything's all good.
Yeah, there's a structural issue.
Yeah, revenue has to, would have to perform back at pre-pandemic record heights for things to be keeping pace and to catch up. And so this is a, I, I think the, that, I like that word structural because it's like a, a house that maybe has gotten off its foundation a bit. And it's all contextual, it's not like, hey, where we're at today is because of anyone's fault. We have lived through a pandemic, one of the most uncertain economic times, uh, of, uh, of our lifetime. Economists didn't know which way things were going, an infusion of a lot of one-time money that governments have in our generation have never seen before. And so we find ourselves in a place where it's an opportunity as a board with our elected officials and our appointed leaders to come together, to figure out, how do we set direction for twenty-six, twenty-seven? With the understanding that we'll be watching quarterly how things are coming in. And if things start getting better quicker, we need to be the first to come in and say, which containment strategies are we able to take off the table? Because there's an opportunity for us to add service back to the public. Right now, we're having to do the reverse conversation of how do we land this thing and get, get things more in alignment so that we don't have an issue, we just run out of cash altogether. So these are ideas, I, I, what we're telling and communicating to the board is, we are going to spend the next two to four weeks coming up with some of the implications of these to come back with some scenarios on what, how these measures would affect the forecast. To then say to the board, here's some things that we would recommend that we now explore in, in detail operationally with our elec, our elected officials and appointed departments. And then start having some conversation about what this means. Would they be painful conversations? You cut, it's, it's always painful, whether it's a furlough or, or a position control or whatever it is. It, it's, it's hard on an organization to go through this time. We wish we were not here. Uh, this is a product of just the uncertainty of how, uh, the economy has played out.
This is responding, this is responding responsibly to market trends, in a sense?
Yes, and, and, and it's responding to where we find ourselves with how our general fund operating budget has increased over time. And the revenues haven't kept track of that. And even to the slide previous, which is revenue, uh, new revenue options, that's a conversation that has to take place. And we know that those conversations don't happen fast. There's a runway for each of those conversations and making sure that those conversations don't intersect with other jurisdictions putting measures on the ballot and, and our communication and the work that has to take for it to be successful. I will say that, you know, it's, it's positive that this county has exercised its political and organizational muscles to get a public safety sales tax approved. Can you imagine where we would be if we didn't have that option? Um, so, you know, there's opportunity to be gained, as I think you said, Commissioner Fornia, about kinda getting our house in order. It allows you, when you go through these situations, to figure out and get, as you as commissioners, get closer to the operations to figure out where things are, are, are at, to make decisions so that when money does come in, because it will, the economy always swings up and down, then we know how to grow responsibly. But I would say that in that- But I would say that in that, I would recommend building in a philosophy of full cost of ownership. For our size of general fund, it is great that we've established a, I think Commissioner mentioned, he called it a rainy day fund, $4 million. But my recommendation was that, that fund should be in the double digits.
Yeah, it should be like 90 days operating.
So, and that, that's going to take, that's not something that you're able to do year over year. That takes a commitment of charting a course over multiple years. And some organizations get there over decades, right? But it's, it's us with this whole organization working to identify budget directional conversations that would set policy and move us in a, in a place where we're, where it's different from today.
When we were in this situation in 2007 to '09, recession, and Robin, because you were probably the closest to actually having gone through the tail end of that. I mean, what was the board doing with respect to COLAs for employees, for example?
So I came in February of 2010. And the stories that I was hearing about the prior two years is the unions had agreed to no COLAs. At that time, there were no increases for the elected officials at that time. But right about the time, if, if you recall, I think it was 2008, inflation was relatively high just before the Great Recession. And there was, I think it was like a 6% because the bargaining agreements were tied to the CPI. And Maria could tell you more, but I think it was like a 6% COLA one year just as the recession was setting in. So it was an extreme increase in pay at a time the bottom was dropping out of the economy. And so subsequent years, there were agreements for no COLA. So there were a lot of things the board was doing. When I got here, they were doing the, actually implementing some of the decisions that had been made. I think that there had been something like 15 departments that were collapsed into seven. There were sections of business that were completely eliminated. There were massive layoffs. So a lot of things were happening in response to the recession.
And if we could go back to the forecast, I think, just to bring into focus some of the conversation, get a couple slides back. Yeah, no problem. No, the forecast. If we were to take out the shift of the road fund, I mean, that's, goes from about a $10 million ongoing to a $17 million. That's where we're at is there's, we've got to work through some of these challenges. I'm not recommending that. All I'm saying is that for anyone to come to you and say, we don't have an issue, is completely out of touch with the fact of the other decisions you're making. You're masking and solving a problem by using the road fund. But if they don't get to do all the projects, then that deferred maintenance, we have our public works director saying deferred maintenance is going to get expensive. And so we can walk through this. But I think we're in for a couple of cycles of really looking at some of these measures and putting them in place and holding the line on how we can grow if revenue doesn't come back the way it needs to in order to support operations. So from here, staff will spend several weeks. If we can go back to the slide, Brandy, that. One more. There we go. We're going to take a look at these. We will also look at, you know, scenarios about furloughs and other components to come back with some ideas with a couple of forecasts that say, if we were to take this measure, this is what would happen in the forecast. If we were to take this measure, this would happen in the forecast. And possibly go through three different scenarios with you and then outline what, what the pain points would be to get to those scenarios. Our desire will be to try to get the operating cash balance at, over that, that minimum mark, which should, I keep forgetting, number 12 million? Is that right? But we believe it should be up more in the high teens, if not 20. Ideally, we're at 25, but I don't believe a two-year timeframe is enough to get us to that 25. So we're not going to be unrealistic and propose something that's so devastating that it cripples us. But we will be making gold to get to the 12 and beyond.
What's the timeframe for the negotiations that are going to take place from our morning meeting?
Timeframe is, next step is for them to go to arbitration and that.
Mediation.
Oh, mediation.
Mediation and then arbitration, is it?
Well, no, mediation and as Cameron mentioned.
Do they take until March or?
I don't, I don't have a timeframe from Cameron specifically.
I mean, there is a timeframe that goes with it, but.
I don't know.
I think it's worth no one for folks to see.
Some of those things can take.
When the other shoe falls.
It can take a very long time if things.
What's that?
It could take a long time.
Oh, yes, it could, yeah, but.
And I'm sorry, I said the wrong word. Not insinuating anything negative. We hope that they're successful at the mediation table. And we, you know, we support Cameron and his efforts and appreciate what the sheriff deputies do day in and day out.
Okay, anything else in this topic?
We can work on retail outlet and trust. I do throw that out, but I don't want people to think I'm sleeping at the switch here.
I'd like to have your team and.
I would say just ask, Chair, I just want to make sure that the commissioners are good with the approach we outlined about going away with this. I mean, I didn't hear any objections, but.
We're all stunned.
I think that's what has to happen, yeah. Okay, so there's no future items? I want a drink.